If everyone would please stand and we're going to ask Dewayne Sims from Disco Hill Crest Baptist Church to come forward and give us our invocation.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this time that we can come together as a city to transact the business that needs to be done. We thank you for our mayor. We thank you for the city council. We pray that you'd give them wisdom and discernment. Father, you give all wisdom and all knowledge to those who ask, and that's what we ask for tonight. We pray that you'd bless the families here tonight. Pray that you'd bless them with your grace, your presence, and your peace. And it's in Christ Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Be seated. Counsel, in your packets you have the minutes for the February 6 work session and the February 6 regular session. After reviewing those minutes, do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion, have a second?
Second.
Second, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Signify by saying yes. Same sign. Before you is the agenda for this evening. What are your wishes concerning the agenda?
Make your motion. We adopt the agenda as presented.
We have a motion and a second that we adopt the agenda as said. Please indicate. All those in favor. All those opposed, same sign. At this time, we'd like to recognize Erin Grantham, representing the Enterprise Chairman of Commerce, who is coming forward with a request. Erin?
Good evening. Hello, Mayor, Council. I have submitted the street closure requests for those listed on the agenda for the downtown events for 2018. I have talked with Chief Jones about all of these, and he and Jared submitted to State Department of Transportation with no issues. So that's all I have for now.
Counsel, you see those dates for the events? Do I hear a motion that we grant their request?
I make a motion to grant the request.
Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second to grant the request. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All those opposed, same sign. Thank you, Erin.
Thank you very much.
At this time, we have the privilege of the floor. We give people a chance to come forward and to address the council for three minutes. If we have anybody that wish to come and to address the council, we ask you to please go to Mr. Dean over here and give them your subject.
Hi, I am Bonnie Woodruff, and I am here representing our neighborhood. It's in District 2. I spoke to you, I think, about the issue. And I'm representing all over the neighbors. It's across the street and in the whole area of Woodland Park townhouses. We have a noise problem in our area that we're hoping that you will help us with. A neighbor has built a music venue. It's a very large building with a stage, professional sound equipment. This is a residential area that he's in. He's been blasting music at all hours, weekends and weeknights. I myself have called the police about 11 times. He stops for about 10 minutes, and then he picks right back up. And I've called multiple times. He has said that he is going to host a rally on that site, which is 1801 Damascus, on Saturday, the 24th. He's going to have a bonfire, a live DJ, and karaoke. We would like to ask that he be denied based on the fact that he had violated the first permit he was given. He was given one on New Year's Eve. The permit was from 6:00 to 10:00, and he played until 2:04 a.m. Very loudly. Doors closed. You can hear every word of it. Along with the fact that he has it so loud, I mean, that's ridiculous. We're not talking about turning your radio up high and having 30 friends over. We're talking about a lot. Thank you for hearing us.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any discussion, Chief?
I guess basically started back sometime prior to New Year's Eve, when we saw some things carrying on on Facebook, about Facebook, that they were going to have a New Year's Eve party there. And they were going to take a donation up for the band, and bring your own bottle, and bring out alcohol, and things like this. We looked into it and met all the criteria through ABC or the state to do that, long as they didn't furnish anything. I called him down to the office and told him there had to be a permit. He'd have to have a permit. And that he could only play the music till 10:00 p.m., where it could be heard outside, but they could turn it down after that and play till after midnight. That's the way that usually works. But we don't give them a permit to violate the noise ordinance past 10:00 in a residential area. Monitor situations like this, other than officers go out there, is by people that call in. We have had eight complaints called into the PD by the same person, okay? We don't have any other individuals that have called. Now, if that's what they're saying today, I'm happy. You know, if that's a problem over there, we need to know about it. And of those eight, there's been four in the last four days. So that's pretty much where we're at. He's been given a verbal warning, and I have not taken any action on the permit up to now.
Just to let you know, Chief Jones, I have had more than one complaint from the lady tonight. So she is not the only one complaining.
Right, right. But I'm saying, who's calling in the... I can only track it by the calls that come in. Yes.
That's zoned, where that stage and all is, that's zoned as a residential.
Yes, and we met with... so we have not taken any action on it.
What is the noise ordinance?
Well, it says it can only be like 50 feet away from the building.
You can only hear it?
Yeah, right. And of course, you know, some houses violate that, you know. So we use common sense when we go out there and try to deal with it. Now, we do write tickets for that, and we issued plenty of noise ordinance tickets before. It's really designed for one of the car dealers are going to have a sale, and they're going to bring a band, and they're going to have a day, and they're going to have a salute to soldiers and stuff like that. And they come get one to violate. Or someone has a birthday party in the neighborhood, and they want to have a birthday party for their son, and they're going to have a DJ, and they're going to have the music a little loud. And supposedly, I was told by the individual that put this on, that he had, especially on the New Year's Eve one, that he had met everybody in the neighborhood and talked with them about it, and he hadn't had any objections. Did he ever make any contact?
No, sir.
Okay. Okay.
Chief, you don't go by those decibels or some kind of noise?
The ordinance is not wrote by decibels. It's just by certain feet.
But now, he has a full band?
He had a band down there on New Year's Eve. But he has a building that he took basically an open-air barn, and enclosed it with roll-up doors. And they let the doors down. We told him he couldn't have it open and play the music. So he supposedly had the doors down, and he's playing there. Now, like I said, Jared, I don't know if you want to speak on it here about the issues that we may have to address.
We have to address because outdoor recreation is not allowed in the residential district. And he has been made aware of that. And there's gray area, which it's hard to determine what's an outdoor recreation if he's not taking out money, if not doing a public event. He is only having friends and family over. And we reiterated that to make sure he had permission from Fire Chief Herring, TD Jones, to get the required permits for sound, number of people, any kind of bonfires he would have a pot, that he would have to get a permit, Chief Herring, to do such things. So we presented all the hurdles that he would have to go through, and let him know that by no means could he create a music outdoor entertainment venue at it behind his house in a residential district. On the sound of it, it seemed like he's trying to do that, but also trying to follow all the rules as best as he can. There's no real clear line that it's given to be shut down.
Excuse me, Chief. I think Ms. Woodruff's... her word was a rally. When people submit the permit, they have to put on a what? So did he indicate rally, a party, or?
They were having a... it was political.
He's running for state office, isn't he?
Running for governor.
I was just curious.
I guess, girl, I heard every word of it inside my house with my TV turned off. And I'm 250 feet away.
I guess, I mean, he hasn't applied for any other event. What's been going on the last two or three days because you've had... Is there a band there?
Full band.
He is a band. I mean, he plays a band.
Well, no, he plays the guitar.
Right. So he's got a stage set up with his equipment, and it's set there. But he also brought in this DJ, and he was showing on Facebook that he's got the whole mixing board thing, and they cranked it up. And I mean, they cranked it up in my living room.
I did get one call today.
I have gotten calls.
We'll get...
Thank you, Chief. Any other discussion? Any other questions?
You have another gentleman.
Okay, come forward.
Good evening, gentlemen. William Rollins. I live off Briarwood and Yellow Leaf. I'm here for some traffic control on Yellow Leaf in Briarwood. People aren't stopping at the stop sign. People are speeding. It's a residential area at 25 miles an hour. That neighborhood is starting to come back. Two years ago, we had no kids in that neighborhood. Within the last two years, we've had five kids and families move in the neighborhood. Y'all put a sidewalk on Antler where they can go to school, but they can't cross the road because of the traffic that is flying through there. The other night, me and my wife went to dinner on Friday night. I'm doing 25. Guy gets on me. All of a sudden, he passes me in a residential area. Something needs to do. I don't want a police officer there 24 hours, but a little bit of traffic control. Slow them down. Write some tickets.
As I told you, I discussed that with Chief Jones today, like I told you I would,
and I think he can...
Right. I'm not blaming Enterprise Police Department by no means.
They're going to look into the complaint.
Right. They're understaffed as it is. So I understand you can't put a police officer there 24/7, but every once in a while, one can come down there and slow them down. Because all those apartments are back there. There's 500 or something apartments back there. A lot of people living back there behind us, okay? Word travels fast. You slow one or two of them down. And that's all I have for you. I just would like a little bit of traffic control on Briarwood.
Okay. Chief said it. Take care of that.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? Continuing on with old business, counsel, you have there on the agenda the moratorium and the billboard ordinance that we have been looking at for several weeks now. We need to lay that over because the attorneys and them have not completely worked this situation out. So I would entertain a motion that we lay this ordinance over.
So moved.
Second it.
Have a motion made and seconded. All those in favor, signify by yes. Those opposed, same sign. We have to review and consider bid recommendation. Call for consideration of a recommendation by Jared Alexander, Director of Engineering, to award the bid for CDBG Demolition Project Number LRCEPF-15002, Phase 7, to Hopper &amp; Moore Incorporated in the amount of $13,800. What's the council's wishes on this recommendation?
I make a move to grant the recommendation from Engineering Department, granted the BMI.
Second the motion.
We have a motion and a second that we grant the request, the recommendation by Jared. So if all those in favor signify by yes. All those opposed? We have an ABC license request. We have a request from CEC-RBP Enterprises LLC, a rigged brick pizza, for a retail beer and wine on or off premises license located at 847 Bow Weevil Circle, Suite 117. This is to call for a public hearing to be held on March the 6th. Public hearing concerning this request will be held on March the 6th. We have a request to introduce from Walgreen Company, Rite Aid 07093, for a retail beer and wine off premises license located at 903 Rucker Boulevard, and call for a public hearing to be held on this request at our regular meeting on March the 6th, 2018. We have a request for authorization for the mayor to execute an easement. Call for consideration to grant authorization for the mayor to execute a permanent easement and a temporary construction easement to Southeast Alabama Gas, related to the installation of a natural gas line along and behind the city's property where the Public Works complex is located. Michael, you will come forward?
Thank you, Mr. President. Do y'all have a copy of the easement, just so I know?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Do you have one, Bob? Okay. All right. This has to kind of correlates with the culvert replacement that the state of Alabama is going to be doing on Glover Avenue. Currently, Southeast Gas has a gas line that is going to interfere with the construction of the new culvert, which is set to be let. Last I heard was June. I assume that that's still on track. It's been moved back a few times, but right now we're set for the letting in June. They are having to relocate that gas line since it does conflict. They have proposed a 30-foot gas easement that would make its way not through, just on the edge of our parking lot at Public Works. It will not interfere with any of the pavement, and go to the backyard of the lot that we just... it's a lay-down yard, and will actually parallel an existing sanitary sewer that we have, and will tie in ultimately onto an existing gas easement that's part of the original easement that the gas line runs through off of Glover. So this will be a 30-foot permanent easement and a 20-foot construction easement that they're requesting.
Do you have any concerns?
No. That's really just a lay-down yard for supplies. We don't do a whole lot of digging. I have asked the gas district to put some heavier markers out there so that we are aware of where they are. We're going to do our best, once they put that line in there, to ensure that we've marked it properly. So that... I know 15 years from now, there's going to be some knowledge, but 30 years from now, there might not be knowledge that line's back there. So if we can just keep it well-marked, I don't have any issues because we're not doing any digging. It's just really a lay-down yard.
Any other questions? Terry, would you mind letting us know how it's going to be marked and how that process works?
Good evening. Typically, we... and if you're riding down the road, you see it most time. It's just a thin fiberglass marker that's got our information on it, phone number, name of business, et cetera. In this case, most likely what it'd be, it'd be something very similar that you see in some spots, like a concrete marker. It's probably painted yellow, very visible. It'd be buried maybe 18 inches, two feet in the ground, something like that, that would, you know, until it gets run over, and somebody tells us that it should be there.
And then you would have multiple levels.
Yeah, it's not that far from the road in there. Maybe a few hundred feet or something. But so it just depends on what the city requests. If you want them every 50 feet, 100 feet, you know. The more we put up, the more interference there's going to be with that lay-down yard as well. So we'll do as many or as few as you, Michael, and the group, request.
Can they use that area as long as they don't do any digging, once that line goes down?
Yeah, I believe the easement in states, you know, maybe no permanent structures built on top, things like that. But as far as using the everyday use of what's on above ground, it'd be fine.
How deep does that line bury? Or will it be buried?
Probably typically, we'd put it in there probably four feet.
It's a high-pressure, isn't it?
Mm-hmm. Now, there is a sewer that we're... an existing sewer that we're going to go under, so that will... well, we'll have to cross. Let me back up and say, because I haven't verified the exact depth of that. So depending on that, we may be deeper. Probably won't be any less than four. Yes, it is high pressure, but it's the exact same... it's exactly the same as what's already in the ground. Yeah, the one that's in conflict. Yeah, so the nature of the line, the size of the line, et cetera, be virtually the same. It'll be operated just like the one that's there now. The biggest reason for shifting it over, we didn't say that, is the culvert replacement, where they originally had us, we would have had to be about 30 feet deep through there. And we, of course, met with the state, and even Allen and some of the other guys have plenty of history of how bad the soil is there. And so to try to get it in, in a spot that's very similar to where it's at, at that depth is virtually impossible. So if we shift it over, it can be relatively more commonplace to maintain and so forth.
Counsel, what are your wishes concerning this request to authorize the mayor to execute this easement?
I make a motion. Do we approve it?
We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second that we grant the mayor authorization to execute this easement. All those in favor signify by saying yes. We have a consideration for a recommendation from our Communications Director, Jason Wright, to accept the proposal from ETC Institute to conduct a community-wide survey on the city's behalf. The total cost of this project should not exceed $20,000. Counsel, what are your wishes?
Mr. President, I move that we grant the recommendation.
We have a motion that we grant the recommendation. Do I hear a second? We have a second. We have a motion and a second to grant the request. All those in favor signify by saying yes. Unanimous? We have to introduce and call for consideration of a request from our Communications Director, Jason Wright, to authorize the purchase of phone equipment from CDW Government Incorporated at a cost not to exceed $30,000. The items will be purchased off of the state bid list under the State of Alabama Networking T637 contract, and will be installed internally by M4 Technology Corporation. Counsel, what are your wishes?
I make a motion to grant the request.
We have a motion to grant the request. Do I hear a second?
Second it.
We have a motion and a second that we grant the request. All those in favor signify by saying yes. Unanimous? We have to introduce and call for consideration of a request from Communications Director, Jason Wright, for the approval of an emergency upgrade purchase of the security equipment from Harris Security in the amount of $6,000. Counsel, what are your wishes?
I move that we accept the request.
We have a motion that we accept the...
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying yes. Unanimous? We have a request to seek bids. Introduce and call for consideration of a request from Police Chief TD Jones to seek bids on 40 body-worn cameras and body-worn camera accessories for the Uniform Patrol Division. Do we have... Counsel, do you wish to allow him to seek bids?
I make a motion to allow him to go out and bid.
Do I hear a second?
Second it.
We have a motion and a second that we allow him to seek bids. All those in favor, signify by yes. Introduce and call for consideration the following contract billing. GovDeals invoice 255-012018-5 for the amount of $514.48. Counsel, what are your desires concerning this contract billing?
I move we pay contract billing.
We have a motion that we approve it. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second that it be approved. All those in favor signify by yes. Unanimous? Counsel, we have introduced and called for consideration of the following travel request. Police Department Officer Madison Nichols to the Alabama Drug Recognition Expert DRE School that will be held on March the 5th through the 29th, 2018, in Selma, Alabama, at an estimated cost of $1,510. We have a request for Sergeant Adair Lee and Detective Angela Brown to... We have a request for Sergeant Adair Lee and Detective Angela Brown to attend the TAASRO Safe Schools Training Conference that will be held June the 3rd through the 8th, 2018. Be held at Orange Beach, Alabama, and the estimated cost will be $3,110. Counsel, what are your wishes concerning these travel requests?
Make a motion, we pay travel requests.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second that we pay for the travel request. All those in favor signify by yes. Unanimous? We have a request to sell vehicles on GovDeals from the Police Department. We have a consideration of a request from Police Chief TD Jones to sell the following vehicles on GovDeals. This is a long list. They are all 2006 Crown Victorias, except for one 2003 Chevy Impala. The vehicle identification numbers are 87, vehicle 71, vehicle 86, vehicle 95, vehicle 88, and vehicle 96. Counsel, what are your, what is your desire concerning this request?
I move that we accept the request.
Second.
We have a motion and a second that we accept the request. All those signify by saying yes. This concludes the council, normal business. As we will be going, I need a motion that we go into executive session.
Mr. Fisher, shouldn't we do mayor and council reports first?
I didn't know if we needed to do that first or do it when we came back. Okay, we'll go ahead and do it. Mayor?
I would like to recognize the Boy Scouts of America back there. If y'all would please stand, let's give them a round of applause. And I would also like to ask you as citizens, as parents and grandparents, let us not forget those people down in Parkland, Florida, on what happened on last Wednesday. We can only say that with our prayers and with hope that things like this will cease because you had 17 people to lose their lives and many more that were injured. So let's hope and pray that these things can be stopped hurting our children.
Ms. Rich?
I certainly echo what the mayor has just said regarding Florida. Just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight and the Boy Scouts for coming and thank you, Ms. Woodruff and Mr. Rollins for your, your concern tonight. Thanks.
Councilman Goosby?
The Oscar Club is sponsoring a day of service on March the 17th, and they're encouraging all individuals, civic clubs, churches, youth groups, businesses to adopt a service project on that Saturday. So I would encourage everyone to get involved in this. It will benefit the entire city and I would like to thank everybody for coming.
Councilman Miller?
I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight.
Yeah, ditto what everybody said about Parkland, certainly. Our prayers are with that community.
I know we have some students here this evening and as an old principal, never say it can't happen in Enterprise because it can't. My encouragement to the students, if you see something, say something. It cannot be handled if they don't know it. So if you see something, say something. Thank y'all all for coming. Do I hear a motion that we go into executive session for the purchase, purchase of purpose of real estate and public improvement?
So moved.
So moved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second that we go into executive session. All those in favor signify by saying yes. All those opposed, same sign. We will go into executive session, but we will return here for the adjournment. We should be in executive session.
Should we say how long?
No more, there will be no more business.
30 minutes?
30 minutes.
Yeah, I got her.
You can have that if you want.
Okay, because I lost mine and I need to...
I got, I need more.
When do we need to give this? Oh, it's no deadline, that's what we need. Okay, because I need to call her tomorrow because I feel I just need to do something with, with baskets, care packages.